Here.
Mrs. Ferrara.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Mr. Rinsky.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I need a motion for approved the minutes of April 19, 2018.
So moved.
Mr. Warner by acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Courtesy of the floor, nobody's signed in. Is anybody from the audience who would like to address counsel tonight? Seeing no one. Who? Do you want to address counsel, sir?
Jeff Fox. Mr. Fox?
No. Thank you. Next on the agenda is county executive report. Mr. McClure, do you have a report for counsel?
I do. I don't have a lot of great news.
No great news?
So I'll start with the stuff that I think is great news. As you may have read, we used our administrative authority to ban the box. What that means is, we're no longer asking the question on our employment application about your criminal history. Now, as a practical matter, in Northampton County, the vast majority of our employees via the, e.g., this is state law, are required to undergo a criminal background check. So if you work at Greystale, you gotta get a background check. If you work in the prison, you gotta... So, most of our employees will still be subject to criminal background checks, but I thought it was important to lead on this issue because you spend so much money trying to get folks rehabilitated and try and get them clean and sober. You spend so much money educating folks, trying to get them back into the world. And so if you get somebody sober, if you get somebody a diploma, and they can't get a job because their resume ends up in the trash can, you've wasted a lot of money, and that poor person might end up back in that cycle that you worked so hard to break them out of. So that's why I did it. It's a... I thought we should lead on that. Airbnb. Mr. Barron has informed me that we should have a deal with them. When?
We should be able to begin collecting August 1st.
Hotel tax, August 1st, from Airbnb. So that also is good news. Sludge. I have... Well, you know, I'm, you know, I don't like sludge. And I've confirmed with Mr. Heller that, based on his 28 years of experience, we don't use it in our parks. And he is reviewing our leases. So we lease, as you know, we lease farmland. So he's reviewing those to determine whether it's used there. We have successfully brought a voluntary provision. We've gotten to the point where the farmland preservation board has a voluntary provision in front of them, which will be a box. So we took a box away, and we're gonna add a box this week, where you volunteer not to spread it on your farm. It has to be a voluntary program because of the Right to Farm Act and a Supreme Court case decided a year or two ago that basically confirms a farmer's right to spread this stuff on their property. So, we're beginning the conversation here by having the voluntary provision, and I hope to advance the ball further in the future as the law changes. Article 13, I believe, is before you tonight for a vote. This is something that Mr. Barron has been talking to me about for years. Before I got elected, he said, "If you get elected, can I do this?" I said, "Well, let's get elected first." Then I got elected, and he said, "Can I do this?" And I said, "Yes." What does Kathy and Terry think about it? And they said that needed to be done. So I want to congratulate Mr. Barron for getting it to this point. He worked hard on it. So did Ms. Anderson, so did Mr. Biedelman, and someone from the controller's office?
Tony Sabino.
Anthony Sabino from the controller's office. I thank them all for their hard work on that, and I hope you vote for it because although it's not gonna transform us into a home rule paradise overnight, it will help alleviate some of the tensions that we've had in the past. Bad news, we've gotten the report back on the Meadows Rudd Bridge in Lower Salkin Township from the PennDOT consultant. The bridge is closed. It's not going to be reopened. It probably cannot be rehabilitated. It probably needs to be replaced. And we'll be in contact with Krieger. We'll be in contact, because it is in the P3. And it was in the P3 as a rehab. Not exactly sure why it was in the P3 as a rehab, but it changes things. So we'll be working on that as we move forward. Speaking of bridges, I really think that the Finance Committee, Public Works, should have a hearing, or a series of hearings, on the P3 project and how it came to be. We've reviewed, and I'll use 202 as an example. This is the bridge where you have in front of you tonight the ordinance on the easements. We need to get those done quickly because that bridge is... They have mobilized to replace that bridge. And if I'm not mistaken, that bridge is a replacement, but that bridge, and this is why I think you need to have hearings on this, that bridge is in good enough shape that if we wanted to do anything to it, we would not have even been able to get it on the tip. It's in... You are replacing a bridge that... What's the rating, 90?
96%.
And out of what, 100?
Out of 100.
You're replacing a bridge that's 96% out of 100. That's 202, the one we're doing the easements on, okay? But there are only eight bridges of the 33 in the project that are deficient. Is that the report? That they're... So, you really need to look into that. I'm not sure counsel, when it originally passed, had a very good picture of it. And it's important that... Now, don't misunderstand me, we're going to do this. You know, Mr. Durtinger's working on it, Mr. Mealy's working on it, Mr. Barron's working on it. We're gonna get this done. We're gonna get the project done, but the public really needs to know.
May I say, Mr. President, I just want to say this to the executive. Ms. Zembo and I just had a conversation before the meeting tonight, requesting certain information regarding the very topic you're talking about to review. And I'm hoping, if all goes well, by June, Finance Committee will dedicate it to the P3 project.
I think you should...
I agree with you. I agree with you.
And I think we should...
I've been looking in, and what I've found, I'm not only concerned, but also confused. And I do believe we need to have a public...
I think you should go through it, bridge by bridge, too.
Yeah. No. So, yes, I just wanted you to know that the process of that has started.
Again, more news. The retirement board met today at 4:00. And the retiree representative, former councilman, you're always supposed to, you're always supposed to address the person by the highest office they held, former Councilman Seifried, brought to the... Well, it is. Brought to the retirement board a legal issue. And the legal issue was this, whether the county can take contributions for retiree healthcare benefits from pension checks. It is clear, we had the Solicitor's Office look at it, Liz, who is an attorney and a human services professional, looked at it. I read the cases myself. And it is clear that the county has been unlawfully reducing the retirement benefit checks, collecting the contribution. So, the retirement board acted to rectify that longstanding. I think it goes back to 1996, it goes back to the administration of Mr. Brackville.
Brackville.
Yes. So I hope I don't have to work on too many other Brackville-related issues. But it goes back to there. And what the retirement board did was ask the county to stop collecting that check, to stop collecting that money as soon as possible. And that, the shortfall, because there'll be a shortfall, will come out of the retiree benefits fund. So that's where it's gonna come. And that's that issue. Finally, and this is the last thing I'll tell you about, and you can get on with your night, we've been offered $25,000, and I'll look for your guidance on this as well. We've been offered $25,000 from Shrin for three parcels at the 33 development. I said no thank you to the $25,000, and I'm going to explain to you why. When I was sitting where Ms. Vargo Heffner sits, and I think Mr. Cusick will remember this, because he was here, too, the low no vote against the TIF. I said it for you, John. The... One of the ways the TIF was sold to counsel at the time was that Mr. Shrin would fund a $2 million farmland preservation.
Absolutely.
But...
Yes, I agree.
Did you remember that?
Yeah, absolutely.
And that was part of the legislative intent, that there would be $2 million from the sale of those parcels. Is that your recollection?
I, as far as I know.
Okay.
I don't trust my brain much.
So since then, the county has collected $254,000, and will be nowhere, based on the math we're doing, at this rate, will be nowhere near $2 million. But what you have to understand is, the devil is in the details. And the way the agreement ultimately was, the way the agreement was ultimately written, the county would get 1.5% of the net proceeds on the first sale. You follow me? So 1.5% of the net proceeds on the first sale. So what happened, I don't know if it was last year, two years ago, the county...
We did an audit.
Yeah. But the county took $50,000 on one parcel. I don't know if you remember that. The reason the county took the $50,000 on the one parcel is because the first transaction was a zero net proceeds transaction because it was sold to a corporation just for the, created solely for the purposes, I believe, in my opinion, in my opinion, for that transaction. So, there's another corporation that's been created by someone for the first sale on these three parcels. So the net proceeds of that sale is going to be $0 again. So they've offered us $25,000 and said, "Well, it's better than nothing." And, as you know, I'm reasonable. And I said, "Well, you know, for the three parcels, we'll take $150,000," even though, to remove our liens, even though that will still, at that rate, would still leave us way short of the $2 million promised originally, once all the parcels are sold. We were told, "No, it's $25,000. Take it or leave it." So I'm leaving it unless you tell me otherwise, because that is not, it wasn't the deal. It's not the spirit of the deal, definitely not the spirit of the deal. It wasn't the legislative intent when that TIF was passed. That part of my recollection was that part of the legislative intent of the TIF being passed was to get that $2 million for farmland preservation. And I don't know how, I don't know, Mr. Cusick, how you remember it, Mrs. Ferrara, how you remember it, but that's how I remember it. And I think it's important that we talk about this. And I'm not taking $25,000 for three parcels. It's going to leave us very short of our goal. Again, I'm not unreasonable. They could have given us the 150, and I would have recommended that you take it. But they've been, we've been told, you may have $25,000. And I suspect that you will find that many of the first sales are going to be zero net proceeds sales going forward, and you'll have to take the charity if you want the money. So, and I, charity in quotes, by the way. So that's all I have. Anybody have any questions for me?
I have. What about the sheriff? Do we have a sheriff yet, or what's the status? Is it posted, or what? What's the story?
We did the, thanks for asking, we did the advertisement this week. I don't know if it's been placed. Did we place it?
It's placed. It'll be in something.
There you go. We're advertising. So we're following the administrative code procedure.
Is there, I don't know HR as, you know, but is there a rule at all that if we don't get someone by a certain, or we don't post it, or we don't do what has to be done, the acting becomes the official sheriff?
No.
No, okay.
That's not my understanding of ours.
Just rumors, lying.
Have we received any updates from the Department of State regarding the voting machines?
We have not, really. No. Although, Mr. Durtiger did go to look at machines. And if you want to have a report on that, he'll give you one. Sure.
Just on this Shrin.
Yeah.
So, I have 15, no problem with what you did. I agree with you. I wasn't here, but that was my understanding from everything I read. Are we, is there anywhere we go from here, other than just saying we don't want that, or are we, are there gonna be discussions, or is that pretty much?
Oh, we'll, we're very amenable to talking. And I was willing to take less than what we should be getting.
Did you get the appearance or the feeling that they were...
I think we were getting a percentage of every one.
At this juncture, we are to take the $25,000. That's it.
Yeah.
Anybody else have a question for the executive?
I thought we were gonna get a percentage of every parcel that was sold.
We were supposed to.
But if it's a net zero sale, then there's nothing to get from it. That's the whole point.
Correct. That's a way around it, Peg.
So, is there anything legal that we can do to get them back?
We have not looked at that issue yet.
How much does he need?
The face of the contract that was entered into is silent on these types of transactions. I mean, clearly, I don't think the county, I don't think the county administration, when they were doing the contract, ever contemplated that there would be zero net proceeds for sale. I mean, I don't think anybody ever contemplated that.
Yeah, $50 million warehouses.
But we'll look at it.
On $50 million warehouses.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, but I thought we would, you know, my understanding of the deal at the time, when the vote was taken, is if we were going to get $2 million for farmland preservation.
Right.
That's why we approved it, or you approved it. Anything else from Mr. McClure? Nothing? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next thing on the agenda, old business. It's a public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "The Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorized in the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Lease Approximately 3,956 Square Feet of Office Space Identified as 301 Broadway, Suite A2, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, from Sycamore Hill Farms Development LP. It was introduced by Mr. Heckman and Mr. McGee at April 19 meeting. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held tonight. Anybody from the audience, public, have a question or comment on this lease? Is there any questions, or more questions or comments about this? I know Judge Rossioli was here two weeks ago from counsel. Seeing none. Off the vote. You have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, this is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is a public hearing on a lease for District Magistrate's office.
Then we have the special discussion versus...
Yes. Back to the vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
And Mr. Dees.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of 9 to 0.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Northampton County Administrative Code, Article 13, Procurement and Disposition of County Property." Ordinance was introduced by Ms. Vargo Heffner and Mr. Cusick at April 19 meeting. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote is held tonight. Anybody from the public have any comments? Sir?
I have a couple of comments about, as I looked over, I guess it's page 10, it says, section 30 to a competitive sealed bidding. The intent, public notice invitation, is to change the public notice from two or more to one or more of the following. And one of the choices of the following would be advertisements in appropriate trade publications. Now, I understand that that would mean if you have plumbing supplies you wanted to sell, that, you know, you would advertise in a plumbing magazine or whatever. But I get that. However, number one is electronic publications which are accessible to the general public. And it says, "One or more of the following." I think, in my humble opinion, in, for better transparency, it should be electronic publications which are accessible to the general public, such as the county website, plus one of the following options would be more appropriate in, you know, for more transparency and alleviate, and do what you want it to do as, you know, I just think that would be more appropriate. That's in my opinion.
You're concerned that somebody could just put it in a trade publication, and the public would never see it?
Correct. And I think a way around that would simply be electronic publications which are accessible to the public, such as the county website, plus one of the following. You know, and the other would be on page 32. I just have a question about that. Perhaps, I don't know. It says, and it, and the addition would be, and it says, "Number three," in bold and underlined, "Money is received from the sale or scrapping or deposited into the Revenue Department General Fund." My question is, because that's a new part of the administrative code, would there be an additional line item that says that revenue from the sale or scrap of that material, or whatever? Those would be my comments.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address counsel? Please?
Ben Hedrick, Bethlehem Township.
Thank you.
I also have a question on page 10. In B, it says, "Given adequate public notice." And you had some public notice under number one, but with that out, I don't see where there's public notice specified. What is adequate public notice there?
I'll make a time period.
And I was out of state for the last meeting, so I'm trying to catch up. If I make mistakes here, bear with me. But I didn't see where anything was specified as to what constitutes adequate public notice.
Mr. Barron, I believe it's that the sections, like the new section one, explaining this is what we see as adequate public notice.
Where's that?
Right on page 10. That was just being referenced by the previous speaker. Number one, electronic publications to the general public.
Right.
Number two, that would be what they're saying is the notification.
Right, but he's talking about the duration of time in which it's advertised.
Put it in in the morning.
I agree with you there. I'm sorry.
It's prescribed elsewhere in the...
Can you tell us where?
It depends on the method you pick to purchase it.
So there is something that describes later on what adequate, okay.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. Page 22.
Two.
And this one, I'm sort of trying to put together a scenario of what happens here. And in that five days that this proposal is sent, with a statement of the need for the services, but in 1315(c)(3), it says, "If counsel fails to approve the contract over $100,000, the executive, where public safety or health, the safety of Northampton County residents are jeopardized, the executive can do this," although he's already received a statement of the needs for such services. So, I'm trying to construct in my own mind, what happens here is that the counsel has that statement of why that service is needed and what's happening, and they decline to do it. The executive can come back and say, "No, I believe that jeopardizes public safety, and I'm gonna do it anyway." Am I wrong in that? Seems to sort of negate counsel's authority.
I'm just gonna throw into the finance committee. We had a very extensive meeting. We were going back and forth. Actually, some of the topics that have been discussed, we went back and forth with the administration as they were going through this. I, I'm hoping, just as before, that when we come up, Mr. Barron will be talking to us again about this, and we can bring these things up again. And Steve, do you have anything?
Well, let's wait for when it comes time for counsel discussion.
Yes, I need to know that what you just said. I'm gonna ask that.
And then the question is, who determines what jeopardization is?
Who determines what jeopardization is?
Right.
Jeopardizes in a term that's clear in the English language?
It is defined as something that might cause harm, or some other things. But anybody can come up and say what they believe is going to cause harm. I'm gonna say that a piece of rug that's loose could cause harm, may not cause harm. It's up to the person, and, again, the trier fact, to find out what that actually is. But who decides what is a jeopardy to the health and safety of the people of Northampton County?
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Is there any other questions or concerns, sir? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to address counsel on this matter? Seeing no one, we'll open it up to county counsel. I guess Mr. Barron, sounds like Mr. Heckman has some questions for you.
I just think, based on what they said, will you come up, Steve? I know we've read over this, the finance committee...
I mean, I know this has been looked over by attorneys and everybody else, and checked, and rechecked, and side-checked, so...
So...
Yeah, I mean, I think, though, that there's been some interesting points brought up. I know we discussed some of them.
Well, number 10, I can answer that myself. We had a, and John can probably remember. There is no media anymore. Sorry. But, you know, there's one person here. They don't come. We already addressed that. How many years ago did we address that? Do we have to go in two or three publications and everything?
Four years ago.
Four years ago. So that's already, that's just cleaning up this part of that. So that's been explained. Yeah, well...
No, I mean, this point, I have to admit, I missed this, and I'm gonna say it. I mean, it says, "We're gonna give public notice, and you can use one of the following." Now, one of the following is electronic, which is fine, that's to the public. But one of them is trade ad publication. Now, if you pick the trade publication, you're not giving anything to the general public.
I think the website's the way to go.
Well, Mr. Barron, answer.
If, so, the way we do this now, the county website references people to a public purchase platform, which the county uses universally. Many counties use this universally. It's the way to go from an electronic standpoint. If I may humbly suggest, maybe two of the three, let's see, maybe, I don't know, because we only really use the public purchase platform. So I guess I would defer to counsel as to how you wanted to do that. But I didn't want to, there are times, specifically, one example I can think of recently is the P3 project, where there were additional trade publications that were used. And when we met with our group, the situation was, we use public purchasing for most everything, this platform. Now, if we wanted to advertise outside, we didn't want to limit that in any way. But the advertising in the paper, based on the time restraints to actually get the advertisement to the advertising department, pay the bill, so that it was sufficiently published, was onerous. When nobody looks in the paper for these types of services from the government, they basically look on public purchasing platforms. They actually register themselves with all the proper insurances, so it actually saves us time. Does that make sense?
But they're all, they're all on the website, our website, when we advertise for anything, it's there. So the public can't access that like anybody else and find this.
Yeah, if you go to the pub, if you go to the procurement website, you'll see our public purchase portal. You will see what's out there. And oftentimes, for specific trade publications, they will actually look at this site, and they advertise, we get secondary advertising for free, because they pick up bids, or RFPs from public purchase, and trade groups will say, "Hey, interesting business opportunity for you. This is just posted." That makes sense.
Ms., are you done? Ms. Rinsky has a question, too. Go ahead.
Because it's in my brain now. I have affectionately been called a dinosaur, and I'll accept that. So now, we used to do the newspapers, and I understand why we don't do that anymore. So they, people have brought me up to the modern times and electronics. I'm fine with it. I'm just an old, small-town boy from that, you know. And so the thing is, okay, fine. But, and I do understand what we're talking about, but even if it's only 3% of the people, like electronic, so you could put something in the newspaper, electronic for online... in the newspaper, electronic, but for online, now is that onerous, or is that a pretty much a quick thing that happens?
It, it's onerous and it's expensive.
Yeah.
Okay, well, my only concern, I'm not saying I'm not, I'm against it, it's just, whenever we do things, we can get caught up in the weeds of government, and we forget that there might be somebody out there who just wants to look it up. Now, again, I don't want to, well, is it onerous, it's onerous from our end, but it may not be onerous from their end. That's all I'm saying.
No, it's on the county website, and it's on the trade publications. They're going to advertise it enough that everybody can find it, because we're looking for people to go as.
All right, so let me switch the question, let me ask, this is fundamental. What's the purpose of putting out the notice? Why do we do it?
We put out the notice so we solicit the best price, if it's a bid, the lowest possible price for the services. If it's an RFP, we want the best cost for our dollar.
And by law, we do not have to set it up so that the, it's easy for the general public to access, other than maybe the people that might be looking for work.
I would argue that you'd want the general public to access it.
So are.
And that's why we use the most modern platforms. I would argue that you.
Not everybody's modern.
Well, if you put something, I would, I would advertise something in the paper if I wanted somebody to find it, or not find it, and say, here, I did it. That's, I mean, that's just my.
No, no, I'm not even saying you're wrong. Sometimes I just get into these debates, because that's part of what we do. I don't have the property.
Oh, I love your debates. Mr. Zirinsky?
I just have a question. Why, why is it that we don't just specifically say, put it on the public purchase platform, and specify that that's where we're putting it, and put it on one or more of the others?
Well, electronic, so, if public purchase platform, I can't see into the future, but if public purchase platform ever went away, this language using electronic publications, which are accessible to the general public, it doesn't limit us just to just the public purchase platform. Say, for example, there's a new media site that we want to use, or the morning call goes all digital, and they allow governments to advertise for free, which would be lovely. You know, it gives us.
So basically, what you're trying to say is that the language is open-ended, so that you could use it universally down the line, right?
At least, that's what our intent was, and that's what we believed, yes.
So that's why this doesn't specify anything, well, it doesn't say anything specific that you're publishing it in, it's just general.
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Baron in regards to Article thirteen? Mr. Deeds?
Well, I mean, could we just say, on the county website, and another one? We could, we could skip out the platform, just say, the county website, and one of the three.
That, I.
I mean, I think that's what ended up.
Yeah, yeah. And we have it on the county website now, go here to find this.
I mean, we already do it, so, I mean, you could say, I mean, we're trying to, I mean, when this thing was written, I'm surprised you don't have mimeograph in here somewhere, you know? I mean.
Oh, data processing coming soon.
So can we clarify what you're saying?
Yeah, so, like the upper amendment, how to put it here, that we could, we listed on the website, and one of the three.
So, public notice to include the county website and one or more of the following?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Yeah. Do we have to do a full amendment, or can it be a friendly amendment?
Well, you can amend it in a bit after. If you have any more questions for Mr. Baron, I'm trying to move this along a little bit.
Just a comment, it's pretty much industry standard is what you aligned us for, and that's what I picked up on when you introduced it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing that was mentioned with regard to the new language, to dispose of property, that is in essence, that was written, it's what we do now. Technically, when we dispose of property, we're violating Article thirteen, and this just brings us into line with what we were doing.
You're referring to page twenty-two?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And if I can, Mr. Craft?
Sure.
On that, that question, now, I'm just redoing this because these things came up tonight, and I think we have a right, obligation to address this sometimes. So, on the first one, I think you've handled that as well. We did have, in fairness, we had a long, you'll admit, a long finance committee meeting on this. But on, on that section, the page twenty-two.
Yes.
The three, I guess my feeling on that is, the executive is the highest elected official in the county, I mean, he may see something, and I don't, I don't want to, I think he's going to have to give it some leeway, and I use the word some with capital letters, when it comes to something like this, but I think counsel should and has, does maintain, I think we can get, it'll get tougher if we try to, I don't know how to parse the words. I mean, I, I find that to be, I find myself to be okay with that, so I don't know how to talk, that's what I just wanted to mention.
Anything else for Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Steve.
Any other discussion from counsel on this entire thing, or amendments, or whatever we want to do?
I do have one amendment that I.
Mr. McGee?
I'd like to propose, and I don't know what Mr. Dees is going to do with, but.
You have an amendment?
I do, yeah. I sent it out to counsel.
Okay.
And it has to do with page forty-one.
Forty-one.
And it has to do with the subparagraph A, under compensation.
What page, counsel?
Forty-one. And bottom of forty-one, A, compensation, and, and I would like it to read, should be amended at the parentheses, from a living wage to a living wage calculations for Allentown, Bethlehem, and Easton, Pennsylvania.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, it's going to read, compensation, one, wage and benefits levels must be sufficient to meet basic needs and provide some discretionary income for a family of four. A living wage, this is in parentheses, what's, what's he add? You're taking the living wage out, you're striking that, and what are you putting in?
A living wage calculations for Allentown, Bethlehem, and Easton, Pennsylvania.
Living wage calculation for, for the, for, okay, we have Allentown.
And, and we're striking the seven dollar per straight time hour, because we'd have to keep changing the dollar amount, and that was the premise behind the amendment, the dollar amount, you know, we don't know when they're going to amend this code again, so this way, it would keep up with every, with the living wage by itself.
Okay, so.
So exactly what are you doing?
You're adding, you're taking out that and adding that statement, then you said, for employment within the USA, this shall mean average production wages up, and what are you going after that?
We're striking, striking the seven dollars, and in nineteen ninety-seven, we're striking that out.
So you're just going to say, at least per straight time in dollars? Isn't this going to get leveraged against the wage index? Isn't that what you're trying to do?
Yes, right.
So how do you state that?
Be put in there, if that you're trying to leverage it against?
And that's pretty much what I put, a living wage calculations for Allentown, Bethlehem, and Easton, Pennsylvania.
So that should strike out the rest of the seven dollars and eight dollars an hour?
It could strike out, this means average production, we could strike all that out.
So just that, that, between the commas?
But, but, yes.
So does everybody from counsel understand what he's trying to approve or get here? Peg does, Kuzic doesn't?
Pick out the seven dollars.
Yeah, so, because it's going to change, in twenty years from now, they're going to continue to put a dollar amount in there, we don't know what that dollar amount's going to be. So we tie it to the average living wage, which is something that is adjusted annually, and this way, it'll take care of itself.
The average living. Is based on whatever seven dollars was worth in ninety-seven.
Nineteen ninety-seven, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so moving forward, it doesn't work.
It's twenty years ago.
Sure.
Yeah, but, I, I mean, I have no problem with getting rid of that.
Bill, can you just read that sentence for me, so I'm sure I'm picking out exactly what you want?
Okay, sure. I'm going to strike this out here.
Does it make sense?
Okay.
Now, we've in this paper here, so I know exactly what.
She wants you to.
Okay, all right. So the wage and benefit levels must be sufficient to meet the basic needs and provide some discretionary income for a family of four. We're taking out the living wage, okay, we're going to put in a living wage calculation for Allentown, Bethlehem, and Easton, Pennsylvania.
Okay, got that.
Okay, we got that. For employment within the USA.
I'm, I'm looking for the next sentence, because I don't think it makes sense with that.
Okay, what's the next sentence?
Okay.
Well, the next sentence is, this shall mean, average production wages of at least seven dollars per straight.
We're striking that.
Well, you're saying for employment in the U.S.
We could strike that, too.
Along with total compensation, so you're kind of cutting out, it doesn't make sense.
Compensation, which I was going to ask, if you, would you be willing to include, would you state, a living wage calculations from Bethlehem, Allentown, Easton, along with total compensation, including affordable family, blah, blah, blah?
Yeah, because that strikes.
And that's, and at the point, and at the point of responsible employers, period.
How about, in two weeks, you figure out how to amend this one section of this thirteen, and have it that we can read it succinctly through, and understand what the heck it's talking about, and then we can vote on it then?
We table it for now?
Because I know what you're trying to do, but what you're trying to do now doesn't make any sense whatsoever, and we can't make an amendment, a motion or an amendment that doesn't make sense.
If I may, why don't, why don't we move it to the, get discussions on to the finance committee, and then move.
Just for this one section, Bill, and then we can, then we can, we can fix it, make it written correctly, so it makes sense, and then have it, because you can't have it, you can't have something like that inside of this language, it doesn't make any sense.
Strikeout should have been in the memo. What was seven dollars worth?
Okay, we can do that.
All right, so we don't have an amendment. Anybody else have anything to add to section thirteen?
Just the other amendment.
The other amendment was, Lori, you had something about advertising on the webpage or something?
Page ten.
Yeah, one or more.
Page ten.
So you would say, page ten, section B.
Hold it.
Page, no, page ten.
So, page ten.
Uh-huh. Section B, public notice. Invitations for bids proposals shall be given adequate public notice to include the county website and one or more of the following.
So that's it, we're just adding the, that's perfect.
Thank you.
Says, we need a second for, Terry, a second. We have a motion and a second discussion on the amendment. None, since it's nice and small. Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Craft.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Dees.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Craft.
Yes.
And Mr. McGee.
Yes. Okay, now we have the amended section thirteen of the procurement code. Any other discussion on it as amended? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Craft.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Dees.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. So we'll have that section in the next finance committee meeting, and we'll have it worded properly, so we know, understand what we're doing. Okay, number three, public hearing, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing preparation and submission of a declaration of taking and related documentation for a portion of the lands of Larry B. McEwen and Clarissa A. McEwen, husband and wife, and Kevin McEwen, and for a portion of lands owned by Ronald L. Engel, and for the portion of the Department of Agriculture's conservation easement. Ordinance was introduced by Ms. Zirinsky and Ms. Fargo Hefner at the April nineteenth meeting, I think everybody introduced it at the same time. Public hearing debate is tonight, does anybody from the public like to comment on this? Seeing none. Members of counsel? Mr. Kuzic?
Just a quick question, I don't know, maybe it's for the solicitor, why do we have to do a condemnation? Were we unable to come to an agreement with these landowners?
The answer, normally you can do a deed, a condemnation, or an easement, because there's a conservation easement, it's governed by another section, and this statute says shall, so it happens. It's unfortunate, I talked to the Department of Agriculture, because they kind of agrees, but you have to go through the process of filing, and you work it out, and then sign off, you have to have a text, you have to have a file. So if you don't dispatch it for a conservation easement, it doesn't allow for a deed for a condemnation.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? It's tiny.
It's on, yeah.
It's in here somewhere, you can read it if you want to have the exact square inches of it.
I think we all paid him.
Okay, we all paid him. Any other discussion besides the amount we paid for it? Call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, next thing on the agenda is number four, consideration of a resolution, amending resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-eight. Mr. McGee, could you please introduce the resolution?
You have further resolved by Northampton County Council, that three full-time positions of clerk-specialist pay grade CR seventeen dash two B, salary of thirty-two thousand two hundred and four dollars shall be created in the district attorney's office effective April nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, so moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? There's a lot of strikeouts in here.
Yeah, a lot of.
I believe they, what happened was, we approved, it was sent to us wrong?
Yes.
Surprise. And what.
We originally approved, they gave it to one position and two other positions at different salary rates, when there should have all been the same.
So that came to us incorrectly?
So it came to us incorrectly, so now we have to.
And we approved this, come here.
To include all three, so they all get the same amount.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so this is the amendment, I mean, of all the strikeouts, as you can see, and, you know, it's, instead of two, it's three.
Mm-hmm.
So we need a, any more discussion on the amendment? It's kind of apparent. Call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dees?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, is there any other old business to bring in front of county counsel tonight? Seeing none. New business, introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of Northampton County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, providing for the adoption of certain procedures related to the solicitation and award of public contracts within Northampton County, providing for certification requirements for public contractors, providing for certification requirements for subcontractors to public contracts, providing for public contract review processes, repealing inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances containing a savings clause, and providing for an effective date. Mr. McGee, I think you sponsored the ordinance, I need a second sponsor. Second. Thank you. The public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at the May seventeenth, twenty-eighteen meeting. Seeing on the agenda is consideration of a deactivation of mobile homes for tax delinquency resolution. Mr. Heckman, could you introduce the resolution, I guess therefore be it resolved?
All right, therefore be it resolved. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council as follows, all whereas clauses are hereby incorporated in this resolution. The deactivated mobile home tax delinquency amounts as set forth in Exhibit One shall hereafter be purged from the Northampton County tax rolls. Three, Northampton County shall submit new tax bills for the mobile homes as is designated Three, Northampton County shall submit new tax bills for the mobile homes as is designated in Exhibit 1 upon being reactivated as permitted pursuant to the Mobile Home Parks Rights Act.
There you go. Thank you. I think there's an amendment to this. Mr. McCord?
May Mr. Correa be permitted to discuss...
Please, but you have to come up to the mic this time.
... mobile home and a big town, my official...
So I think we're talking about section three on this.
Yeah, well, one whereas, just to give you a little background, when I had met with the tax claims bureau, they, they brought this situation to my attention, and they said, could we get these off the tax rolls? And we initially did the ordinance. It was drafted according to the law, which says, once they, once they are sold to a third party, you can then put them back on the tax rolls. Subsequent to that, the tax claim bureau looked at it, and those 26 mobile homes are so old, they have, they determined they've been scrapped. They've been taken apart, so they're never going to be mobile homes again. So the tax bureau wanted you guys to know that, yes, they would be taken off the tax rolls, but they're never, ever going to get back on the tax rolls, because they're no longer mobile homes. So we were recommending that, if you look, the, the one, the fifth whereas clause, if that would be deleted, and if paragraph three, under the now, therefore, would just be deleted, then at least it's accurate, you're just taking them off the rolls, and we're not saying they're going to be reinstituted after they're sold to a third party, because they're no longer...
All right, so the fifth whereas clause should be deleted, right?
Correct.
And then the, then the number three, completely deleted itself?
Yes.
Taken off the...
It's never going to be, yeah.
They're never going to be reactivated?
Then you'd be good, it would be accurate, in the sense that you're taking them off the tax rolls, and are not going to back.
Are there any questions for Mr. Correa on this?
We have, we'll do the changes.
Not on the amendment, but I guess my question is, has to deal with the uniformity clause. Does this cover the entire county for these, this mobile home issue?
Well, these are the 26 that, that they have deactivated, but the statute certainly covers the state plus the county.
Okay, but I'm just wondering, does this include everyone in the county, or are we just doing this spot because people have requested it?
No, the county, when I met with them, my understanding is, these are the 26 that have been deactivated up until this point, because they would have put them all on the list if there was more.
Okay.
If that make, if that answers your question.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Correa? Thank you.
No, that's good.
Okay, so I have, I'll make the amendment that we remove paragraph five, the whereas, fifth whereas, and the third, the third, now, therefore. I need a second for my motion, I guess, I probably shouldn't have done that. Discussion on the, on the, on the amendment? No discussion? Can we vote on the amendment for the resolution, please?
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next thing we need to do is vote on the amended resolution, as, the resolution as amended. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none?
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
And Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Do any other new business to bring in front of council tonight? None? Are there any committee reports?
I, apparently, we'll be meeting in two weeks. I don't know the agenda, but we'll be meeting, the finance committee.
Okay, so that's the report? Thank you.
All right, before it is, that's going to happen.
Thank you, sir. Any other committee meeting reports? They're generally set aside for things that happen in the committee that people didn't get to hear, so you can inform the public on it.